So we'll go on to item number two, which is the presentations and discussions. Our first item up today is October 27, 2022 council meeting and the agenda. So obviously, on Thursday, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll have a roll call. We've got Brian O'Shea from the Desert Grace Church to give the invocation. We have a pledge, acceptance of the agenda. Is there anything on the agenda that needs to be added?
Maybe separated. I have to abstain from, well, I should abstain from the first, for the minutes, right? Since I had to miss it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you need to say when we do the minutes.
So can we do it separately or?
Where are the minutes?
They're on the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, the abstention is sufficient.
Yeah. We weren't there yet, but acceptance of the agenda.
Oh.
So anything addition, anything additional? You made it. Okay. All right, then we got the city manager's report. Chuck, is there anything that you want to cover today?
Sure, we'll have a few project updates just for tonight. Item of interest, we received our August sales tax report, so two months in. And pleased to report, there was a bounce back in sales tax receipts. So we were up a little over nine percent for the month of August. If you recall, it was four, so the month before. So we're currently sitting at eight and a quarter percent year-over-year from last year, which is, well exceeds our budget. So that's pretty good for a summer month for us.
Yeah, we're staying ahead of projections. That's good. Okay. Item number two is the consent agenda. We have the discussion of regular city council minute meetings for 2.1. That's where you would say, I wasn't here, so I have to abuse myself. Okay. On that particular item, and I don't think there's a problem parliamentary with voting on the other two.
Okay.
As long as you say you're doing that with exclusion of item one.
Okay.
I think we're okay. Warrant ED, accepting warrant ED. Any questions on 2.2? And the discussion on the mayor and the city council, a local emergency. We're going to change the title. Greg, would you just request that we change the title?
I just requested a change to the language of the item for 22-068 to also include the original resolution of 2020-040 in the language of the.
It is there. If you read the motion. It says that 68 rescinds 2020-040.
I was looking at the, I was looking at the initial.
We'll make sure it all adds up.
Okay, we need to make sure we're consistent, if that's the point.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And any other questions on those?
That's all I had.
On those items? We'll go to public hearing items. And item number three is possible resolution for the new Series 10 liquor license. Mrs. Adams.
Mayor Mueller, members of council. This is a new application for a Series 10, which is a beer and wine store by, for the Sierra Vista Food Co-op. The notice of the public hearing has been posted on the facility, and to date, we have received no comments from the public pro or con. The police department has done a background of the applicant and has no objection to the application moving forward. And if approved Thursday night, it will be returned to the state. This is a license application that's one of the few that we've done recently since the creation of the entertainment district that this allowed for this license to happen because it's within that district and there's, I guess, a little street church or something in one of the buildings close by. And this allows for the waiver of those requirements, the entertainment district does. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for Mrs. Adams? Now we'll move on. Next item is under new business. Item number four, Mrs. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is to approve, if you so choose, an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Sierra Vista and what is referred to here as the Cochise County Community College District proper. This is to jointly utilize a 10-acre parcel of land that is just west of the Sierra Vista Riding Club Arena area and just east of Fire Station 3. The college and staff have identified this location as a great place to jointly use it for the college to construct a paved track. And they will use this track for the new first responders academy. They will move that academy into the Sierra Vista location. They will construct five acres of the property with a very thick concrete pad that will be utilized for this course, which paves the way for them to bring that academy here. It can be jointly used by city staff as well for CDL courses, other drivers training. The college plans to use it for their CDL courses as well. And it's a good opportunity for us to work together on something that can be great for everyone. The calendar will be run through my office, just like we do other city assets, and we keep those calendars. So we look forward to that very much. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Is primary for driver training for police and fire?
For fire, yes.
Police and fire, and of course, you mentioned CDL training, et cetera, for the city.
That's practicing.
So it's a joint facility. Questions? Just comments?
Comments? Comment and question. First, I think it's a good idea, and I appreciate all the work put into this. I wanted to go to the Schedule A Joint Facility of Use Agreement, Paragraph 1, Subparagraph Delta. The city agrees to maintain approved and completed infrastructure improvements made to the property in perpetuity. Yeah, that word. The question.
Yes.
Are we going to be tied to maintaining and upkeep of the concrete slab later on in life? Once they put it in and they pay to put it in, are we responsible for the upgrades of things they do to the property?
Councilmember Benning, the short answer in accordance to this agreement is yes. It does not mean that we can't have those discussions later on and make any amendments that we see, you know, if they wanted to construct something else, this could be construed as a living document.
Okay.
That can be changed based on both parties agreeing to. But yes, just like other traditional city projects, it becomes dedicated to the city, and we agree to maintain the property.
Okay.
The other thing you get to realize, too, is who's getting the primary benefit?
Right, I agree.
We're going to get the primary benefit, and we probably need to pay our fair share in the future, whatever that may be. Chuck.
Yeah, and also, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when Laura said fixed slab, she means it. It's a six-inch concrete slab, and it's a multimillion-dollar facility. The college was able to get funding through the state to do that. It's integral to bringing the public safety academies here to the campus here, which, of course, is a benefit to the community. And while, you know, its priority usage is for the training purposes, it also has some side benefits, like taking our training off the airport, which is a good thing because then we'll be able to focus more on economic development there without having to worry about a place for people to train. Events that are occurring at the airport can then probably be scheduled to occur at this facility as well. So there is the opportunity to make some revenue as well from this. So I think it's a very good agreement, and Dr. Rowleyler and his staff were very good to work with on this particular project.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Mr. Mueller.
Thank you. I think it's definitely a good step towards getting a full fire academy here in our area. Small step. I like how you said the concrete path paves the way. That was kind of slick. I like that. I like that dad joke you threw in there, Laura. But I really want, I like the progress that's going, and we have a lot of, like, unutilized land, and that's city-owned. It's a smart use of our land. It's very convenient to Station 3 and all the other stations that can come over and use it as well. So I really like the thought of using that area.
Any other comments? All right, thank you, Laura. And now move on to item number five, West Stone Fire District Ambulance Agreement. Mr. Felix?
Yeah, this is.
Who is here? Who's going to talk about this?
I can do it. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Mueller, members of the council. This is a renewal of an agreement we currently have with West Stone Fire District. As you're aware, we provide ambulance billing services not only for us, but a number of agencies here in the area. So basically, we charge about $16 per bill generated, and Mr. Felix assures us that we do that at a small profit. So, oh, there he is. He'll be here in time to address the next one. That's the gist of the agreement.
All right. Any questions for Chuck or Mr. Felix?
Just want to comment, just make sure everybody's tracking. $16 is just the fee for the billing.
Yeah.
It's not what somebody charges for the ambulance transport. All right, so there's no confusion there.
Yeah.
We have several fire agencies in our area that do transports Sierra Vista, West Stone Fry. All right, and Chief, is it still about $1,200 a ride-ish?
It varies.
With inflation?
It varies.
All right, so that's the cost of an ambulance ride. This is just the cost to bill for those rides. It's not what people are going to pay for a ride. It's not $16.
Okay, and that's what they're paying for us, if they're paying us to do these kinds of things.
Right.
That's the other thing. Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? So now we'll move on to item number six, reimbursement of certain capital item expenditures. Mr. Felix?
Mayor, members of the council, this is our standard, you know what it is when you're in a hurry, every light is red and every student has to walk slowly through the crosswalk. This is our standard reimbursement resolution we do every year at the beginning of the year. We plan to finance certain activities through the budget process, and the IRS regulations stipulate we have to pass a resolution like this showing our intent. If we don't pass a resolution, we have to have the financing in place within 30 days after the actual expenditure. So this allows us the flexibility to finance the items at the end of the year if we need to. It does not mean we have to. It also saves us interest money. So for instance, we've seen many years where we've planned on financing certain vehicles and they've never showed up. If we did the financing at the beginning of the year, we'd be paying interest on those without having any vehicles here. That's kind of a waste of money. We did add the two ambulances because, as you know, we've had a change in the slight change in the Schneider project to move the tennis courts, and we're going to finance the vehicles, those two vehicles, use the cash, we're going to cash that out and help pay for the change order for the Schneider project for the tennis courts. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Felix?
Mr. Mayor, Dave wasn't here. I have an update on that, although I do believe the ambulances need to stay on the list to give us some flexibility in the future. But Schneider has identified about a million or so dollars in savings on the current project, which should be adequate to cover the tennis court situation that we discussed, I think, a month or so ago. But the financing of the ambulances still may be important to us because we're still trying to come up with sufficient funding for the animal control expansion next year. So I think we need this flexibility. Again, we may not have to do it, but if revenues are good, but I think it's wise to include them.
Okay. Questions? All right. That's item six. We'll now go on to item number seven, discussion of support for Tohono O'odham Nation grant application and award of medical chest, for medical chest compression device. It says Johnson.
It's me.
That's you.
Yes. Mayor Mueller, members of council, Sierra Vista Fire Medical Services submitted a grant application of $17,000 for medical chest compression device, otherwise known as the Lucas device, and received the grant award on September 22nd from the Tohono O'odham Nation. The funding for this project will increase survivability rates of patients suffering from out-of-hospital cardiac arrest emergencies. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on the device.
Mr. Johnson?
I looked up the device, and they run around 17 grand, right?
Yeah, they did run around 17 grand. When we submitted the grant, it was 17. They're a little higher now.
Now, what EMS substation is this going to be assigned to? Is it the new one, or will it be floating, or?
Mayor Mueller, Councilman Johnson, this initial Lucas device will go probably on engine one. With the subsequent, with the two ambulances we are ordering, they are going to be supplied with Lucas devices, so that will go on all the frontline ambulances.
Thank you.
That's all I had. Any other questions?
Chief, what I need you to do is something I asked, I haven't done it publicly, but I need you to draft a letter for my signature to thank the folks from the Tohono O'odham Nation. We've been recipients three or four times in the last, well, since they've been required by law to have these programs. So we just need to have a letter ready for my signature to the, I'm trying to remember who, what the title of the person that granted the order.
It's on the letter.
Chairman.
It's on the letter.
So whoever the chairman is, we need to just send a nice thank you note, so that way they know we appreciate it and we're willing to spend their money elsewhere, too.
Yes, sir. I will do that. Three or four more of them.
Sir, if I can, I just want to also thank Mr. Mike McKerny, Parvane McKerny, for doing this. Obviously, I'm sure he did a lot of the legwork for it. His name's on the thing. So I'm appreciative that we have people on our staff, a lot of our city staff that are always looking for grants like this and taking extra time, their own personal time, to do things like this. Not a lot of cities have that, and I'm thankful that we do.
Yep. We do have a lot of good people. You're right. Okay, that's item seven. We end with the call of the public comments and requests of council, and then the adjournment. Anything else on the meeting for Thursday to be discussed? All right, then we'll go on to item B today, status and updated committee connect events. And I guess we're up, who's up first, Chuck?
Matt will go ahead and introduce, so then.
Sure. I'd be glad to. Mr. Mayor, members of council, good afternoon. Part of our work in community development is coordinating with the Continuum of Care. HUD requires us to engage the providers in the area as part of our planning processes for the community development block grant program. The idea being working together is stronger than working through individual organizations to solve these complex challenges on housing and homeless issues. The two initiatives that we're going to be covering today are an outgrowth of our involvement on the COC, as well as your two-year strategic plan that places a focus on addressing affordable housing and homeless issues in the community. The Sierra Vista Community Connect has been underway for eight months now, and we think it's a good time to take a look back on how it's performing relative to the initial goals going into this. And so the starting premise was setting up a low-cost, low-time investment test run on bringing the providers together at a single location to make services more easily accessible, much akin to how the Warrior Healing Center is set up for providing veteran services. The recommendation came from a gap analysis that we conducted two summers ago that involved extensive interviews with nonprofits across the county. While we knew it was a good idea that mirrored best practice, we really didn't know what the participation and attendance was going to look like going into this. And I think you'll find the information that Jay is about to present to be enlightening in this regard. Jay Matchit is the executive director of Cochise Housing Connection, who's been under contract to help promote, organize, and carry out these events over the past eight months at the Ethel Burger Center. I know his man-hours have greatly exceeded what's been put into the contract, and we very much appreciate his effort in that regard. And Scott Borgstadt, Corporal Scott Borgstadt with the city's police department and representative of Better Bucks at Sierra Vista, has also been a champion, and I'm sure he'll have some additional comments following Jay's presentation. So with that, Jay will provide the statistics to date on the providers and the participation rates.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, it's an honor and a pleasure to be here today and give you a little update on the first eight months of our little experiment. I'll take you through it, and at the end, if you have any questions, feel free to do that. So, yeah, okay, so what is the Community Connect? Real quickly, it's a pop-up, one-stop resource center and referral center, a collaboration with community partners, which provides a central point for navigating accessing regionally available support services. Works to foster self-determination and curb homelessness in our community. So what does it look like? Briefly, it brings together about 25 different agencies, everything from Arizona at work to DES, healthcare providers, homeless services, childcare, domestic violence, in one-stop-shop here, where folks can easily see at a glance what's in the community and can meet with them and find out more and actually sign up, in many cases, for services and/or make follow-up appointments so that that can be done on a more extensive basis. So you can kind of see a little cross-section of the different agencies that come. We're grateful to every single one of them because it is a time commitment, and it's really been successful because of them, and so we're grateful. So a little bit of metrics, I kind of picked the most telling data points, so I didn't want to overwhelm everybody. So if you want more information about certain things, feel free to ask. So we do intakes from the, when people enter the event, and you can kind of see the spike and the growth again. We had, we have on average anywhere between, you know, 40 to 60 some intake forms completed each time. Not everybody's captured. We try to make that, you know, as tight as possible, but people come by, not everybody's willing to fill them out, so we try to be respectful of that. But it's a good barometer of, you know, how many people are coming and where the statistics that we are going to look at come from. So you can see, we had a spike in the, right in the beginning, and then it fell off during the summer. There's probably several reasons for that, but as you can see, in the fall, it's starting to grow again. We do these estimates that are based off of agency tracking forms, so the agencies kind of keep track of how many people they talk to, and from there, we can kind of estimate how many people kind of got through and didn't necessarily fill out an intake form. So you can kind of see that data is also reflected there, that initial spike, and then the dip over the summer and coming up again now that we're in the fall. So I just kind of wanted to tease out some of the more interesting data points that we've gotten from these registration forms. As you can see, the number of people who say that they're struggling to pay their rent or mortgage has increased, you know, from 45% to now 70% of the attendees are saying. And of course, if you average that out over the entire program, it's over 50%. So I thought that was an interesting trend. The rolling averages over the past eight months, 23% of the attendees report that they are employed, 44% report that they have social security income, social security disability is another third, and a VA disability is 12%. And 65% report that they're on some sort of public assistance, whether that be SNAP, medical assistance, or both. So we can see that there are some gaps there in what people, you know, might find beneficial in coming to this thing. So just kind of a little bit snapshot of who comes to this, we have average age of about 51. It tends to skew towards seniors, which is probably understandable, given that it takes place on a Tuesday, which is great because there's a lot of struggling seniors out there, and they do make a lot of use of this event. So living situations break down, very interesting, almost 50% rent, 12% own, 32% other situation, which captures homelessness, but it also, it captures other kinds of in-betweenness, like maybe they're staying with a family member or friend, some of those things where they're not renting or owning, but they do have some immediate shelter. So as far as where the people are coming, I picked the top four destinations or places. Sierra Vista comes in at 76%, and followed, you know, by Wichita City, Hereford, and Benson. We've had people from West Stone, Bisbee, Douglas, but those are very, very few people. So it's primarily in the target for Sierra Vista. The overall impact, so over the course of the first eight months, we've had almost 500 people attend, points of contact, which is the times that people have an opportunity to touch with one of the agencies, so we count those ticks. And that comes into 3,000 points of contact. Number of follow-up appointments resulting from those interactions comes to 217. Number of completed applications for services over that time is 121, and we've served about 580 meals during that time. So the agency points of contact peaked significantly in the beginning, and there was, again, like the rest of the data suggests, a fall over the spring, summer, but you can see it's trending upwards again. And we're trying to get a little better with agencies returning those forms because part of that is, you know, people pack up and they get walked off with, so part of that is that, but also just it reflects the attendance. So a little bit more snapshot of the homeless demographics and trends, which is kind of one of the whole points we're doing this. Again, it follows a similar arc. We average about, you know, 15 to 20 homeless folks each time. Again, it's nearly on peak with, it's back to its original where we were in April. So again, it fell off significantly during the summer, and over the last few months, it's come back significantly. So overall, we've helped or reached 141 different homeless individuals, and we look, break that down by homeless, gender, or sex, and that comes into, over that time, 72% are women, which I thought was striking because that's not necessarily what folks, you know, think about when they see folks on the corner. But yes, women and 24% men, and we do have some trans or non-binary folks that come too. Homeless with dependent children has gone up significantly since the beginning. I don't know if that's a result of the word getting out or what, but, you know, it began with 13%, and now this last one, we had between 42 and 43% of the homeless that came report that they have dependent children. So I thought that was a pretty telling trend. And one of the other things that I thought was interesting was that among the homeless population, 28% are employed versus the overall attendees, which are 23%. So they're more likely to be employed, and they are less likely to be on public assistance than the overall attendee. So I think that that points to a real opportunity for this event to plug that hole, get them connected with the ES or other support services, because a lot of these folks are not plugged into some of those supports that are available in the community. So I think it's probably the most helpful to folks that are homeless, which is what we're after. So that's just a brief overview. I didn't want to, like, bombard you with statistics. There are more, so if you would like more, I can get you more. But I thought that that was kind of a nice snapshot, and if people have questions or comments, I'm happy to answer anything right now.
Okay, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, Mr. Matchit, thank you very much for spearheading this and started and working with Matt McLaughlin and the city for this. Out of that 497, is there a way that, or do y'all track how many of those are, they came last month, now they're here this month, and did you eliminate them? Or is there a way we know how many times one individual may or may not come?
You know, that's an interesting, we would like to track that better. One of the things that we've done is we want to make it anonymous because people are hesitant to give out a lot of their, which originally we did want a name, number, and so we could track that, but we found there was a hesitance to give that information. So we don't have a great barometer for how many, I mean, anecdotally, I can tell you, you know, there are familiar faces that come.
Okay.
And, you know, it's nice to see, but there's a lot of new faces each time, too. So I wish we had a better way to track that. We've tried to walk a fine line between getting those forms out there so we can get data, but we don't want to, like, if you walk into an event and they're, here's, you know, this 12-page form, please, you know, take your time, and, you know, it's not exactly, we want to keep it moving. So we've tried to strike a balance, and one of those things we've had to do is pare back that intake form.
Okay, and then, I don't know what slide it was, I apologize, but you talked about the.
the agency follow-through is what I'll use, I don't quite remember the words you had, and you had like an 80% or 30-some percent follow-through where they sought help, or they saw something with one of the agencies there, and then they came back to them and went back to them. Are the agencies reporting that, or how are we finding that data?
So, the agency tracking forms, they report how many people, talk to them at the event, they report how many people were signed up at the event for some, or given some sort of service, and the amount that were scheduled for a follow-up intake elsewhere, at their home base, or whatever sort of service they provide. So that's kind of where that data comes from, and then we do get, sometimes agencies will follow up me and let, oh, you know, thank you, we got, I don't know, three or four people came through. So, it's kind of a mixture, but mostly from that agency tracking, to answer your question.
Well, thank you, Jay, again, for spearheading this and getting this started, and Matt also, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Yes, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is it, I know it's always been on Tuesday, right, and I've been to about three of these now, so I kind of got a metric of what they're like, and I've gone at different times, just to check on it. So that day, I know that day is bad for some agencies, because they're doing their own thing. Right, they're doing their own food baskets, things like that. Is there, after these six months, have you looked at that and said, all right, maybe we should change the day, or offer another day where the people that are working, that can't be there, because they're not all unemployed, right? Some of them are trying to work now, so if you can't be there during lunch, is there another day that's available that maybe you can get more people? That's my first question.
Okay, I'll, I'll answer that one first. So we've, we did think about different days, and part of the reason we're a little constrained is Tuesday was, we came up with it because the Ethel Burger Center is a very busy place, and there's a lot of different events going on there, and one of the days they've kept open is Tuesday. We didn't want it on a Monday for, you know, that's when holidays are and such. We'd like it midweek, and Wednesdays are very difficult for the Ethel Burger Center. So if we want to continue to use the Ethel Burger Center, which we found, they're great, the staff there is fantastic, they do set up, they help us take down, it's a good spot, you probably agree, but we are constrained by their schedule, and they're not open, you know, with their staff services on the weekends. So we would, we've thought about experimenting with different days, but it's worked very well at the Ethel Burger Center, and I'm willing to entertain switching it up. But as far as booking it out, Tuesdays were always available, so we were able to schedule, say, six months out. And we thought keeping it consistent was important for not only the people that come, so they can count on it, but also the providers, so they can, it's easy, first Tuesday of the month. So that's kind of where we're at with that thought process.
Okay. And I noticed a lot of, not a lot of them, so everybody's different, every needs has different needs. I saw some sheets that are completely empty, some were full. You know, have you looked at that data and say, what's missing here, or what else can we bring in, or where are people walking in and walking out, saying, no, I didn't find what I needed here? Do you have any of that data?
Mm-hmm, we do. We asked what they came for and what they found most helpful in the exit surveys. What we're finding is most lacking is, there's, every single month, there's a lot of requests for the Housing Authority to be there, to answer questions about Section 8 and other programs that they provide. To date, I have not been able to get them to attend. So that is one that comes up frequently. Other ones are affordable housing for seniors, that comes back. Other things are like immediate rental assistance, like today.
Okay.
And that is difficult to provide. So those are the things that come back, that people, month after month, say, hey, I'd like questions. If you ask us about Section 8, and we can provide, you know, information about the program, but, you know, it would be more helpful if it was coming from the county agency that provides that.
So there's no response, whether it's a bad day for them, or why they're not coming?
Well, I, I did speak with them, their view was that the waitlist is closed, and if they attended, it would be giving false hope.
What an awesome system.
So that's what they're, that was their, but again, even if it's closed, our view was that people would like to know, what do they need to do? What, you know, if the waitlist does open, what do they need to get ready?
Correct.
If so, to get on it, because it was 1,200 people long, I know it's getting down there now, I think it's like 3, 400 now. So I, and Anita's told me that it's going to be opening again soon. So I think, as they get closer to getting that open, I think it would be very helpful to have them, because they are the largest provider of subsidized housing in Cochise County.
I think they'd want to see that they need a longer waitlist, other than say, people don't show up.
More houses.
And don't make our waitlist longer, that's kind of ridiculous, but I.
I mean, I'm not trying to throw anybody, you know, I'm just saying, that was their thought process.
Come on the bus, I'll drive the bus over, I have no problem with that. If they're not, if they're supposed to be here and not showing up, we got to figure out why.
Yes, sir.
And I want to know why. I want to know why they're not supporting our city, and why they just feel like it's a waste of time. It's unfortunate.
I can't answer that question.
No, I know you can, but we can find out. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Greg, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I just have one quick question. You've been doing this monthly. Has there any been, has there been any thought, you know, based on the numbers of people that attend, to maybe do it every other month, or, because it seems like when you first started, you had a lot of demand, and then it kind of tapered off in the summer, and it's picking up again. But perhaps, you know, maybe alternative months, or, just a thought.
No, we did, we thought about that, and we asked the providers, and the majority felt that every month was, was good for them, because it was consistent, and the, and the people that come, you know, two months is a long time to wait. And what's kind of happened is, agencies have kind of self-selected in and out, so maybe they can't, because they're volunteer-based, so they drop out for a month or two, and then they come back.
Okay.
So it's kind of worked out so that they kind of find what's available for them, so I.
The vendors that you have, you know, need, need to know that information, and they've obviously provided for you, for you, so it works, works out best for them, it'll work out best for their potential customers. Thank you, that's all I had.
One last thing. Will you go ahead and get your last thing?
Just the food, you had it on your slide, you had the meal served. Is that number of volunteers included? Or is that like, everybody that's there, whether you're a volunteer or attendee, or, if there's like extra food, do the attendees get to take it, or how does that work with the food?
That's a good question. Primarily, it is people that are coming for services. If we have extra food, which we have sometimes, we do feel like, because the agencies are sending out folks, it's nice that they have a meal. Of course, they've been very good about generally not taking a lunch or something if it looks like we're going to be short, but that number is including some of the agency lunches, I mean, a number of them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on this and keeping it going month to month. It's probably a lot to coordinate all those agencies, like herding cats, but a suggestion based off comments from Councilmember Benning, I don't, I don't know if it would work, but with the hesitance, you have a hesitancy from the homeless population to give information, maybe just like a checkbox to indicate whether or not they were there prior, if it's their first time, and it would help us give a better idea of if that number's inflated or not.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that, I'll add that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is it a comment question?
Yeah, no, go first.
Yeah, I, thank you so much for coming here and presenting this information, it's really, really great to see the trends and kind of what all's going on, and all the different statistics and everything. So that's really great, and I also think it's really great to have an area where all the agencies are, because sometimes you don't know what's out there, you don't know what you need, and you talk to somebody, and then, like, oh, they're here today, so you don't have to, you don't have to make a special trip, and you can talk to them there. I think that's really great. And I do like the idea of having maybe an option once in a while, because sometimes, like if you're a single parent or you're working, you can't make it, you can't make it during lunch, you can't take time off of work. So having an option out maybe in the future for people that are not able to get there, but still need to be able to find, get help and talk to somebody. And then the question that I had is, the people that come, do you know where the, where most of them find out about it from?
Mm-hmm, so now it's becoming more word of mouth, we do advertise, social media, we put flyers at the library and other places. I know that Scott's distributed little, mini flyers, I guess he would say, to some of the homeless, we send it out to the agencies. So a lot of times, sometimes they get told, like, Hope Incorporated, they tell, hey, you know, they could bring a bus down, so generally, it's, and we had the articles in the paper, that, you know, people, that's a spike, oh, newspaper, we've been on the radio. So generally, it's social media, word of mouth, and then like a combination of agency referral, or radio, or newspaper.
I'm just going to, I'm going to follow that line for a minute. I know we have a lot of agencies involved, and you probably have contact information for every agency, you have their locations, and probably their hours. The question for Matt, then, is the city taking that information and put it somewhere on a webpage that we have, that we host, so that people can, can go to that when, when they can't make it on a Tuesday? So they know which, which agencies they can contact. Do we have, have we done anything like that in the city? Because I would think that would be something we could do as well.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, the Legacy Foundation does have a resource directory.
Yeah, I know, I know, but if I'm, if I'm homeless, I probably don't know who the Legacy Foundation is.
We can certainly provide a link to that resource directory.
Yeah, the thing is, if we can reach, if we can link to that and have something, that that would, that would help as well. You had something else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, she kind of, Councilwoman Dr. Angelica kind of asked how we were getting the word out, but I also want to ask, kind of, as the director, what's success looked like to you with the program? And then do you have any success stories yet so far, something great that you've seen?
That's another good question. Well, I think success looks like, well, it looks like a few things. One of the things it looks like, which I forgot to mention before, is the agencies being all together is a rare thing that happens. They are all in their own silo, they're doing their thing, they're doing good work, but a lot of what's happened, and what's been told me, is the collaboration, all of a sudden, they're sitting next to another agency, and they're talking about, hey, you know, we got this thing going, and what about you? And there's this cross-pollinization that happened.
That leads to referrals.
That leads to referrals?
Yeah.
Yes. So they're, they're communicating, it's breaking down some of those barriers, and that was something we didn't really think about much when we started the event. And that's really paid a lot of dividends that we, we, it's hard to measure.
Yes, sir.
But that is success, because I think, especially in Cochise County, there hasn't been a whole lot of collaboration among a lot of the service providers, which, understandable, big county, a lot of geographic diversity, but I think it's great that that's starting to happen, a little bit more here. The other thing, as far as success stories, we've had people come back and email me, oh, I got housing, or I was able to get information for, like, we've had teachers come, I have a student, and now I was able to do that. People write on their exit surveys, you know, thank you. Every, I mean, it's, it's little things, you know, like a person that can't afford pet food, well, all of a sudden, you know, the animal shelter is there, friends of the animal, and they're giving out, and so they're not worried about, you know, feeding their cat. And it's the little things like that, that I think, we think about homelessness, that's the, that's the driver here, but it's also about keeping people stable in their house, and making that, those ends meet, is difficult, so if we can keep people, it's always better to keep somebody in their home than rehouse them. So I think finding, it's helping connect the homeless that are homeless with services, and that's success. So the more people we serve, the more work gets out, that looks like success to me. But it's also about supporting the seniors that are on a fixed income, dealing with inflation, dealing with rent increases. And I think if we can keep the working families and the, and the people that are on fixed income feeling like they can find out where they can get services and then get them. The other thing that success looks like is, folks come to the event, and they don't really know what they're expecting, and then they come and they walk around, and they see all the different tables, and they might not need a service that day, but the seed has been planted, and so they have a friend. And that's been, you know, I had a friend, and now I know, you know, whatever it is, you know, community partner says, you know, housing, or, I have a, a friend of mine's in a domestic violence situation, and then they know, hey, that, that resource is out there. So even if they don't need it, they're spreading that, that information, so, and that's also hard to quantify and measure. But I think there's all these, I call them ripples, that are cascading, and I think that that's one of the limits of the data, because it doesn't really capture that, but I think if you speak to a lot of the agencies, they'll show you in their own, in their own wheelhouse what that looks like. And certainly, the exit surveys reflect a variety of gratitude and small success stories, so, and big success stories, actually.
Thank you, Jay, I really appreciate it. And Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, I'm proud to be on a council that sets this as a priority. I'm proud of the staff that takes our priorities, that runs with it, and starts such an amazing program for our community, and the people that come in and bringing all those people together. It's, like Mark said, going down there and seeing it's amazing, and I look forward to continued success, so thank you so much, and thank all of y'all.
I just, I just added, validates the process we go through when we do the strategic deployment.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else got any comments? Thank you, sir, appreciate all the good work you're doing for the community.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you for hopefully a long time.
Appreciate it, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Matt, who's next?
Okay, so I'll be presenting with Scott, the Better Work Initiative, and this was developed in concert with Better Bucks of Sierra Vista, as another avenue to provide homeless assistance through positive means and encouragement. Dovetails in with a homeless service pilot program that was included in this year's state budget, $10 million was set aside for programs with an immediate labor component. That grant is being administered by the Arizona Department of Housing. Only local governments can apply, which would preclude Better Bucks of Sierra Vista from being a direct recipient. It's a dollar-for-dollar matching program. The city's responsibility will be to pick out the job sites and assignments and provide transportation and supervision of work crews. Were you going to cover logistics, or, I mean, it's described in my memorandum, but Scott put the concept together in terms of the operational details, and at this point, I'll just turn it over to Scott, so.
Thank you, Matt. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for having me. I also want to introduce Chris Hale, one of the board members of Better Bucks, so if I can't answer a question, he might be able to. Better Bucks started out, part of our charter was, after the end of the first year, we're going to analyze where we're at, and any funds over and above of what it takes to run the program, we're supposed to go back into the community in some way, either helping with the homeless through other agencies or nonprofits, or coming up with another idea. The Better Work Program, duly named by Matt, which was perfect, started out in the Better Bucks Board of Directors, and we talked about the possibility of creating this program specifically for the homeless, where we would provide basically day labor for them, we would pay them in cash, we would have paid them $14 an hour, since minimum wage went up, and provide them an opportunity to work in the community, get paid directly, and then also introduce them to services that they might not know of. The two requirements to be eligible for the program, obviously, one of them is homeless, the other is, they have to be registered in HMI-S, the Homeless Management Information System. That starts them moving towards or into the programs and introducing them to the services that are available. Partnering with the city on this, as Matt said, they're going to provide the supervisor for the day to pick them up at the location, take them to the work site, and then take them back to the pickup location where they will be paid. We're working with Good Neighbor Alliance as the pickup location, they're kind of the central location for the homeless population, plus it will introduce them to where they need to go if they need services. We're going to start out a little slow, see how the program works. We're launching this in January, we're hoping to have five or six workers initially, and then to see how the program works, work out the kinks, and then we'll grow from there. I addressed this with Matt, the idea about this, and we talked to Victoria about it, and it was great, because not even a week later, that's when this, this grant came through from the state, and it just fit absolutely perfectly of what our intentions are. So that's kind of the basics of where we're going to go with this, and hopefully, we'll be able to add more work crews, more, more days, cleaning up city properties and state trust lands. We will not delve into the private sector at all, gets into a whole, another billywhack, but we're going to stay with cities and state trust land properties. Any questions on that?
I'm going to start here.
Yeah.
You mentioned there were two things that they had to do at the very beginning, what are those again?
To be eligible for the program, they have to be homeless.
Okay.
Okay.
And then register, or be registered in H M I S.
Now, what is, what specifically is H M I S?
The Homeless Management Information System. That is the government program that basically gets them registered so they can get them into services, whether it's, you know, housing, Section 8, or something like that.
Now, is there any requirement for the individual to be dependent, independent of chemical?
That's a good question. And that's something our board discussed. And we also discussed criminal history as far as that goes. They cannot be intoxicated, okay? If they're, if they're, if they sign up to work on a Tuesday, and they go to get picked up, they cannot be intoxicated. If they are or show signs of intoxication, they will not be allowed to work that day, okay? We cannot, we cannot demand or require them to be completely sober or drug-free.
Maintain a sober lifestyle.
Exactly.
And that's what I'm getting to. And I would hope that if folks are identified with those problems, the agencies that deal with those issues, drug and alcohol, would be involved, and they could be, they would be referred.
Absolutely. And again, that's part of the H M I S part of it. There are questions in H M I S that address that, and then, of course, works on getting them the help that they need. And the other part that was brought up is, you know, what if someone has a criminal history? My work with the homeless population, most of them do. Most of them are working or trying to work through the court system and can't success, be successful because they don't have a job. Can't get a job because they don't have an address. They don't have an address because of various things.
It's a loop.
We're hoping that this starts them on the right process, on the right sequence of events to get them, you know, an income, and then work towards housing and, you know, create a job history. We've actually had some local businesses that are interested in maybe taking some of these folks over as they go through our process. Now, the way that the program was going to work is, they cannot make any more than five hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents per calendar year through the program. Otherwise, then we have to start sending out W9s and all that. We're not going to do that. But we've already got agencies like Arizona At Work onboard, once they start getting close to that, to start coming in and talking with these folks about other options that they have, and then other local businesses that are interested in possibly hiring these folks on a full-time or full-time, part-time position.
You answered my, you basically answered my next question, is if we have a person that's showing progress, I'll put it that way, I think we should be able to do whatever we can, especially with local employers and the fact that they need, they need to train folks to build and whatever else, plumb, and all those things that we're short right now. I would think we would, we'd reach out to the local employer base, as well as through Arizona At Works, to try to get employment for these folks as well.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll shut up. Go ahead, Greg.
With a six-hundred-dollar cap, you're only going to get forty-two hours out of each individual, pretty much. And that doesn't seem like, that seems like a normal work week to me. That's one thing. Number two, paying them cash, I'm a bit troubled by that, because that just fuels the beast for many of these people.
We could pay them at Better Bucks.
That actually was brought up, but Better Bucks won't cover everything, okay? Better Bucks won't cover the rent. Better Bucks won't cover a fine. You know, that type of thing. The question's been brought up about paying these folks in cash, and are they going to take that money and go buy drugs? It's quite possible.
Choice.
Very possible. But if they had a part-time job, and they were making, or even a full-time job, and they were making a living week by week, that doesn't mean they wouldn't take that part of that money and spend it for that type of thing. Our intention is to guide these people to changing their lifestyle, giving them that opportunity. Like I said, a lot of these folks can't get a job because they haven't got an address, and they can't get an address because they can't get a job. And like the mayor said, it's just cyclical. So we're hoping that getting them a start, leading them towards services, whether it's addiction services, or getting into a homeless program, or housing, or whatever they need, or job service, we're hoping that that guides them to the better path and moves them on so they can become consistent, productive citizens.
Yeah. Okay.
Mark had his hand up next.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm excited for this program, like, a lot of people are. I know you said the state trust lands, obviously, we have a lot of issue with that. I brought that up recently. A lot of illegal dumping on our state lands that the state does nothing about, and we're kind of left holding the bag there. So to be, this, I mean, it seems like a great opportunity for us to, you know, we shouldn't have to clean those lands, that should be a state thing, and we should be able to sell them, send them a bill, I wish we could do that. But instead of doing that, it looks like this program can help with that. You know, we get a lot of calls, and, you know, things that are dumped, unfortunately, a lot of construction dump sites along Seventh Street, take your pick of any lot there. So I'm glad to see that this has been maybe an option to get some of those cleaned up, that we, you know, we do end up having a full crew, things like that. So that's, I like that. And I like that you covered that, Mayor, as well as, you know, because I was thinking, would you give somebody a reference or a letter of recommendation, track their hours, you can say, here, I started off in this program, now I'm ready to take a next step to another job. That's great. I like that as well. And I don't know, you know, the cash thing, that's fine, but, you know, is there like a, I don't know, maybe this, what if somebody wants Better Bucks? Would that be an option, like, can I get half and half? Or, you know, I don't know if there was somebody actually would want that, I'd probably want the cash myself, but...
Probably, just to address that real quick, probably what will happen, because our board is all about Better Bucks, obviously. Probably what will happen is they'll get paid, you know, they're fifty-four dollars for that day, and, oh, here's a couple books of Better Bucks as well.
Perfect. Thank you. And then the last part of that, this supervisor role, right? Obviously, I'm thinking it'd become from the streets or parks department. Is that like a rotating duty? Is that going to be somebody that can pick up extra hours? How's that going to work?
Okay, well, it's going to depend on the nature of the assignment. And to circle back to Councilmember Johnson's question, we don't envision this to be a daily work program. We're looking at four-hour shifts, potentially, you know, maybe twice a month, three times a month, depending upon demand. And the assignments could involve cleaning out kennels at the animal shelter.
That's something I forgot to cover.
So that would be an animal control supervisor. It could involve maintenance work at the park, so that would be a park supervisor. It could be doing, you know, abatement on state land. And we have a code enforcement officer that raises his hand and is willing to undertake the supervision. So these are, I want to point out and emphasize that these are costs that the city is already incurring that we could apply towards the match requirement to, you know, leverage the state money to assist with the work that will be undertaken through this program to provide a community benefit. So roll off charges that we ordinarily cover under our abatement budget, half of that can be reimbursed through this grant by the state. So a lot of financial benefits, as well as community benefits to the city.
Yeah. Matt brought up a good point about animal control. They have a real issue on the weekends of getting people to come in and clean kennels. So what we learned in researching this program is, in Tucson, they have a couple of women's shelters up there, and they use those folks to go and clean kennels on the weekends. I addressed this with Arlene Garcia, and she couldn't say yes fast enough. So then I went and addressed it with the ForGash House, and they're excited about the program. They said, we got people that would work today if we could, if the program was going. So the intention is, on Saturdays and Sundays, to start out with two workers per day from the ForGash House. They would be picked up by someone from animal control, taken there, they would work their four hours, be taken back, and then paid as well. So it's not just state trust lands, and thanks for reminding me of that.
Great. Ma'am?
Well, thank you. I love this idea. I think, I know it's not perfect in the way that we have to execute everything, but it's, I think it's a vital piece of the whole holistic approach we're taking to this. And something, what I've learned recently about addiction, for those who suffer from it, when you have more pride and more self-esteem and confidence, it helps battle that addiction, that self-loathing that makes you crave whatever you're addicted to. So I think it's great, because they're going to feel accomplished after doing some work, especially much-needed services around the city, and see the outcome same day that they're doing it, and then be rewarded. That should help overall with the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilwoman, I'm pleased, I'm pleased. There's nothing, there's, nothing can replace the feeling you get when you earn your own keep. And once you do that, you encourage them to do other things, and more things. But I want to address something. So when you go to H M I S, there's certain criterias and certain things you're doing to get other benefits. So for instance, Good Neighbor Alliance, you don't just go there and say, hey, I've been staying the night here, I've been trying to get a job during the day, put me on your housing list, put me on your housing, I forgot what it's called, put me on your housing sheet to get housing. You have to show those steps. You have to show, I'm employed here, I'm working here, I'm doing this. And then they'll put you into their housing program. And a lot of facilities are like that. So this is a start, even if it's four hours a month, I'm showing the company or another organization, hey, I'm getting up, I'm getting dressed, I'm going somewhere, and I'm taking responsibilities. Okay, well, we have this program. Okay, now I'm getting dressed, I'm getting up, I'm taking other responsibilities, now I'm in a housing, I'm on a list so I can get in a housing, like the Good Neighbor Alliance housing. So it's a, it's a holistic approach, and we got to do everything, even if it's four hours. Four hours to us, when you're making, when you're working twenty, twenty, eighty a year, forty hours is nothing. When you ain't working, and you don't know where your next meal's coming from, four hours and fifty-four dollars is a lot of money. And I love Better Bucks, but if I'm working, I'm getting cash. Scott, I have to say, anywhere I see good things, I see you. So I appreciate all you do.
You hear that, boss?
Hear what, Scott?
And like, I love this program. I, I, when we, when we sat down and we were hashing out our strategic plan, and everyone kept saying what we wanted to do with the homeless, with the mentally ill in our, in our city, we've seen the vision, and then y'all are running with it. What's nice now is we can finally turn, not finally, but we can turn back to the public and say, we can answer those questions. This is what we're doing for housing, this is what we're doing for homeless, and it ain't going to be fixed by tomorrow by no stretch. But this is all the same steps. This is, this is the things we need to do to move forward in that, in that project. So again, this has been a good work session, and I just thank everybody up here, I'm having a good day, Mr. Mayor, and that's all we got.
Yes, ma'am.
Comment. Thank you so much for being here and for answering our questions. A lot of, a lot of the questions that I had, have been answered. And then especially, I saw that the six-hundred annually, and that was, I really, really love to know that there's employers out there who are ready to take people that have, you know, been, been through this program, and to continue on so they can continue to get help. Because sometimes it's really scary, when you need help, you're scared to kind of put yourself out there. But then, once you do, and you see that there is hope, sometimes you just need a little boost to get you going, and to know that there is already like a path in place to kind of break that cycle is really, really, really excited to find out how things progress in the future. So thank you.
So are we. Yeah, very interested in how they progress. I was off last week on a little vacation, and I guess there was a press release that went out announcing that the grant was awarded. I'm already getting phone calls from people saying, hey, I know someone that would benefit from this. And I've only been back one day, so, yeah, the word's getting out there in the entire community, the general citizens, and the homeless community, and they're excited as well.
One of the things I thought of while you were talking was, as we look at next year's strategic plan, there may be a need to figure out how we can help influence employers to use these folks that are in the program, have successfully participated in the program, and try to promote them and get their involvement. In that case, a lot of times, it takes the individual, I know this guy, let me go talk to him type of thing, or a gal that owns a business and get the employment done. So it may be incumbent upon us as the leaders of the community to do some of that kind of stuff to kind of, kind of move on. Marty, did you want to share anything?
No, all my questions were already answered by everybody else, though. But thank you.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Scott, while we have you up there, I know Councilman Johnson asked for a little update on how Better Bucks is doing.
Sure.
Where your finances are.
Absolutely, we can talk about.
Could you give us a court brief?
We can talk about that. So the program launched October of 2021. We've, we've run a full year now. So based on the first year, the total amount of purchases made in the local retailers have been, has fourteen thousand and fifty-six dollars. Eight thousand nine hundred and forty-two Better Bucks were used. Customers paid over and above what they use for Better Bucks, four thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Better Bucks paid out ten thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars to local merchants based on the Better Bucks that were used. So far, year-to-date, for 2022, we're at just a tad over ten thousand. So we're definitely going to surpass, probably this month, you know, that, that first year mark. As Better Bucks as a whole, unfortunately, our treasurer is on a church mission to Belize, so I don't have the exact breakdowns as far as, you know, expenditures and all that type of stuff. But what I can tell you is, we've got just a little over twenty-seven thousand dollars in our bank account, which is why we're, we're able to move forward with the Better Work Program on this. So we're going to use some of those funds, you know, to help facilitate the Better Work Program as well. Does that answer those questions? Okay.
Yes, thank you so much.
Also want to point out, thanks to the city, Chris is up here, the bus passes, folks, these things are amazing. People absolutely love the bus passes. For the first year, eight hundred and eighty-nine bus passes were used. And that's, that's tremendous. Bus passes, we'll get the booklets turned into us, and a lot of times, they don't rip out the bus passes. So we'll take them and then hand them out to the service agencies that are listed in the book. ForGash House, Good Neighbor Alliance, Lori's Place, the Warrior Healing Center, all those, they love those, those bus passes, because they'll take and they'll hand them to folks that use them to go to a job. They haven't got transportation, but they'll use them to go to a job, or to an appointment, or whatever. They're extremely, extremely popular. Better Bucks is also working with the Care Court that has recently started up again. And people that participate in Care Court, if they are meeting their requirements and then show up, they are given Better Bucks as a reward, basically, for doing that. And we also have extra bus passes for them, so they can make their appointments and their court dates and whatever. So like you said, it's got a holistic feel to it. Chris? Oh, yeah. Forgot about that one, too. Chris mentioned shopliftings. You know, we work with the Goodwill. They participate in the program. Folks can use Better Bucks at Goodwill. We were only into this program a couple of months, and they were telling us that their shopliftings have been reduced almost ninety percent. We do not have figures as far as fries or anything like that. They're too big, they don't track that, I guess. But Goodwill, you know, ninety percent reduction, that's a benefit we, we didn't expect. We also provide booklets to them, and they've handed them out for folks that, you know, need them for whatever. One story in particular was a woman in a domestic violence situation, recently had to leave her home, and was trying to buy clothes for her kids, and could only... to leave her home, and was trying to buy clothes for her kids, and could only get, you know, one or two items. They actually gave them better bucks so she could, could use them to buy more clothing. So it's got a benefit to that.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that at Goodwill, the better buck is one, one better buck will get you one item. You don't have to, right? Is that?
That I don't know. That I can't, I, that I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, a question. Sure. So just to make, they do have an expiration date on them?
Yes.
Is it very strict? So if someone's saving them for a rainy day, and they're a day late, are the local businesses going to say, oh, sorry, man, you're expired? Or is there like some leniency there?
They're supposed to say no.
Okay.
Okay? It's kind of like, we've got to, we've got to kind of hold them to the merchants, to their requirements.
Okay.
Can't buy alcohol, tobacco, and that type of stuff. There's also a limit on how many can be used at one particular time. Now, if someone uses 30, and they're only allowed 20, do we penalize the merchant? No, we'll honor that 30, but give them a stern warning. Actually, there's only been a couple of receipts that we have denied because alcohol was part of the purchase. So they, they didn't get any of the better bucks redeemed on that one, but they've learned. And, you know, they're, we're not, we're coming up on the year, and the way we've been working it, because we want to have a good relationship with the merchants, is probably the first month that there's some, some in there that are expired, we'll go ahead and honor, but we'll give that warning again and say, hey, teach your people to pay attention, you know, that they can't accept them if they're over that year.
All right, cool.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a comment about expiration. I obviously bought some better bucks when the first thing started, I gave some to the church. I kept some for myself, handed out a few, and I noticed about two months prior to the expiration date, I still had two booklets. So I went to the Salvation Army, who gives them out on a regular basis, and just gave them the booklets to give out so it would be spent by the expiration date. So if you're, if you're out there and you got a couple that you forgot were in, were in your truck or your car, like that happened to me, is there, our agencies will, will take them and give them out the same day you get, practically the same day you give them to them. So that's a good way to make sure your stuff doesn't expire, and then go back and buy some more so you're ready for the next year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corporal. Appreciate it. Chief, thank you as well. I know this goes against everything in a police officer's, sometimes inside when it comes to something, working with people without background checks, all that stuff like that. But I appreciate you guys trying to give somebody a second chance to, to maybe break the cycle. Not, and I always say this all the time, not every town does, not every city does this. I'm glad to see it here, and I'm hoping to see some more success stories. And I know you have some already that people call you, so I'm looking forward to hearing more about those.
So did I just hear that more than firefighters have a heart of gold and sometimes cops do it, too?
Sometimes. I don't know. That's coming from Mark. That's pretty good.
I don't know. Okay. Anything else? Matt, on this issue? Questions? Comments? Mark, we really appreciate it. Chris and Jay, we appreciate everything you're doing for the community. We're always looking for great ideas. When we have the strategic planning come up early next year, share anything, anything that you think is going to work so that we, we can look at it and incorporate it in future, in future goals for the, for the community. So thank you very much. All right. Item C is a report on trips. Recent trips, meetings, and future meetings. I will share with you that I, I had a meeting last week. We were very fortunate to have Representative Adam Smith, who is the chairman of the House Armed Services Committee, the one that sets the budget for the Department of Defense, come into the community and talk to the Wachuka 50 in the, in the chamber. We had a very good conversation. We talked about setting the landscape, we talked about what's going on for the futures of Fort Wachuka, and a number of other issues. And the bottom line for us is that when I asked him, next time we go to DC, if, if we could make sure we get a 15, 20 minutes with him and present point papers and those kind of things, he said he'd be happy to, happy to schedule us. So that, even though he may not be in the majority, the next time we go visit, he'll still be, he'll still be the minority, what do they call it, vice chair, whatever, whatever it is. So he's a powerful man in the Defense Department, and so it was a very productive meeting, and I thought, anyway. So any other trips, meetings, future meetings? Chuckie, Chuck and Victoria can jump in on this, too. We got anything scheduled coming up?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, your next work session, we're going to get you guys a straw man proposal on boards and commissions that you had a discussion on, and we've been doing some work on that, and we'll have that on the agenda for discussion, and we'll try to get that out ahead of time for you. So some ideas that we've, we've thrown together based on your discussion.
Okay. Anything else under that category? Future discussion items or council requests? Victoria, you got anything on, on that's hanging, other than what Judge said? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After, after reading up and reading everything we got for the day's work session from the Community Connect and Better Works, and then hearing from Better Bucks, one of the things that, that when myself and Councilwoman Umphries and Councilman Johnson was at the time, one of the things that the council did that we really admired was the work sessions where we brought in 501(c)(3)'s and gave them five minutes of fame, due to what, where, why, who, how can we help you, and how can the community help you? I don't want to, if you have a consensus today, that's fine. I just want to see if maybe we can put it on a work session, talk about it, see how to manage it. But I want to bring that back. And one of the other things they used to do, we used to do on council, was the business of the month. And I don't want to do a business of the month, I don't want to recommend a business of the month. What I like to do is a business highlight every council meeting, and we just rotate around the dais on who brings one that, that council meeting, and do the exact same thing before our businesses. 80% of our business of our community is small businesses. Let's highlight them, and it goes back to our push for economic development, and goes back to the push of, of stay local, buy local. And here we are as the, the leaders of Sierra Vista saying, hey, let's highlight some businesses. So I wanted to bring that out to everybody, and especially you, Mr. Mayor, and see what y'all thought. And it's just a matter of bringing it back, not making anything new.
I think, I think we can put both those as a point of discussion for the, for the next meeting.
Okay.
For the next work session, not meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. And that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, I thank you for your attention today, and your, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Sorry, one final thing. I just wanted to let council know that we're going to move the time of the November 10 council meeting back to 4:00 PM so we can accommodate your special event for the evening.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right. Any, any other discussion points, questions? So you know, nothing before council? Ben, you're adjourned. Thank you very much.